Today is Monday, August 4th, 2025. This is a regular Board of Education meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will do it tonight.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Set up his role call, please.
Rebecca.
Here.
Ms. Dodge.
Absent notice.
Carlos Harp.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Mark Kimball.
Here.
Chris Dara McAlpine Taylor.
Absolute notice.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Public fundamentals. Thank you. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. Now, we did receive a request from Jaylee White. Have we received any others?
No.
No. Okay, Jaylee White, are you here? I'll be able to look at you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll start my timer. Good afternoon. My name is Jaylee White. I'm a proud Madison Heights resident, a wife, a parent of both an Eglat and a Girl Scout, and a dedicated educator. I serve as the Vice President of the PTO, Liaison for Special Olympic Unified Championship Schools, and am the only ASD-certified contained educator in this district. I'm also a recently expired city-certified behavior analyst, a gardener, and in my own words, a hillbilly. I share this to give you a clear picture of who I am and why I'm here. As we head into a school year marked by budget cuts, I want to offer perspective specifically on the extraordinary commitment many of us have already made long before these cuts were announced. Before I ever set foot into my classroom, I spent $2,500 of my own money on background checks, certifications, toys, learning materials, and decorations because my program was new and it was under-resourced. There were no funds for inclusion tools such as gym. Gym lacked basic equipment, some of which I repaired and mended on my own time. As a result, I funded the unified initiative in our district, building on over a decade of volunteer and professional experience with the Special Olympics of Southern Indiana. Through grants and personal efforts, I secured $1,800 on equipment for gym, music, and sensory programs. This year, I'm collaborating with art and OT to build a sensory wall and to provide more than the inadequate $50 that is allocated for MES and ECC. Public funding should guarantee our students the resources that they need. It's a right, not a luxury. Through the PTO, my team and I secured headphones for technology and replaced the old fridge in the teacher's lounge because nobody else would. We got fans for the rooms next to the boilers because it was far too hot for learners, let alone teachers. Furthering, as I'm sure you are aware, it's unsafe to leave the doors open. Since the last board meeting, at least 17 programs, teachers and support staff have been cut, fired, or have simply left. Promised contractual items like pay increases have been suspended. I'm entering my third year on my first-year salary. We were already struggling, and now I'm afraid we are entering into a crisis. This coming school year will be worse. Mark my words, as teachers leave, students will leave too. Scores will drop, learning environments will deteriorate. This is not a reflection of our administration. I want to note that Dr. Hemingway, every day, gives her utmost sincerity to give her best each day to her students and staff. Aaron Andra, every day, he gets grants and funding and secures things that we need in our programs. They too, however, are restricted by the Board and the Board's decisions. So the future of Madison District Public Schools cannot depend on unpaid labor and personal sacrifice of its educators. I urge you to honor the contracts you signed and resist further cuts. I am aware of where we're at in the budgets I've watched the last two years. To what has already been stripped bare, please don't cut anymore. Every reduction pushes our staff, families, and students closer to the logical decision to find better elsewhere. Thank you for your time and for hearing. Please speak to others in our district. For far too long, we've either been told no or simply that we can't. Thank you.
Next, up is the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Administration report.
Thank you. So first, I want to have a conversation. I know that you guys wanted to talk about the phones at the Board Office, and if you guys don't mind, can I bring Travis up to explain what the issues are with the phones? Travis? Oh, you could have sat here, Travis. Is that fine? Can he just sit right here?
Absolutely. Not seat Travis.
Hello. So right now, when you contact the administration building, if you try to dial out to an extension, there is no dial-up library. So when you hit number three, no matter if you're trying to reach somebody in the admin building or at the middle school, they start with three. You will reach Margie here in the front office because she is the third option on that tree. It is only a tree, not a dial-out directory. So what we're doing right now, because that was all planned before we had an administrative assistant sitting in the front office of the admin building, we are working with our network admin and the vendor to either allow a dial-in directory so you can dial an extension from that point, or we're going to look at remapping it completely so that if the administrative assistant is at that front desk, they'll hit on that phone that they're available. That will make it so that when you call, it'll ring them, and they'll answer it, and they can direct you. If they're not there and they don't log into that phone, then what will happen is you will go back to that tree where it is right now, where you have to choose who you're calling.
I'm going to start with, last week, actually, I was trying to call you, and I could talk to no one. Our concern, of course, is we're in the middle of hopeful enrollment. So that was very disappointing because it said, if you want to enroll your child, call the school they're going to. No number, no forwarding, no nothing. It was a dead end. And so obviously, that highly potentially impacts anybody who may have wanted to come that couldn't get through. So even when you go back to the tree, I still believe in, I believe you were here when we had this conversation before, we need a person. We are in the business of people. We need somebody to answer the phone. And when she's at lunch, then someone else has to take over. It just, that's, that's my heart and soul of this. We need to be open, friendly, and available when someone wants us. But to go back to that old tree, just that needs to be revised as well. Because to just say, call the building, click, isn't, isn't good enough, I don't think, for anybody, right?
The hardest part with that is that we are locked down to one through zero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero. So we have to be able to reach everyone in the building. We have to be able to reach, I believe one of them is grades or transcripts, which takes you to Margie here at the high school. So there aren't that many options in the system we're living in right now, which is why we're looking at the opportunity to hopefully do a dial-bydirectory.
Or apply a new system.
So we explored that. The system we have right now is older, but we live it. We have it. We have extra phones. We have extra servers. It's all housed in district, so there's no cost to it. The only cost is whenever we have a major issue and my network admin or myself can't fix it, so then we have to reach out to a vendor, which is rare, maybe once a year, maybe. I think we've reached out twice in the three years I've been stationed here. So if we are looking at a new system, it's very expensive, and it is something we were looking at doing. However, there are other projects that need focused first with our infrastructure, specifically our fiber access into the buildings, and then also our network switches are a little bit behind, so we're looking at replacing those with E-rate. The phones were the third thing on that list, but we're not sure if we can.
Every child or every parent that can't get ahold of us is $10,000, a $10,000 potential debt. So I think that needs to be factored in, my own personal opinion, into this equation as well. And you can respond, and then I'll open the floor to anybody else.
Trustee Kimball.
Trustee Kimball.
Yeah, I think the primary focus should be on the phones. All of our financial problems can be solved by more enrollment. I agree with the speaker of the cuts that are being made. They're painful, but we have no choice because we have no money. The way to improve that is to get more enrollment. And the fact that we're ignoring the phones when people could be calling here to inquire about their, their child coming here, I mean, the recording, contact the school where your kid's going to go to school, that's like calling a car dealership to buy a new car and getting a message, contact the salesman that handles your model. That's it. We need someone answering the phones. Now, I know it's an old system, and from years ago, I mean, I've been on the Board since 2017. Back then, when we would call, a human would answer the phone and then direct us from there. We need to get back to a human being answering the phones and being helpful. We are in the service business. It's that simple. I've been in sales for 35 years, and I spend money to make the phone ring, not to ignore it. And I don't understand why that's not our primary focus, because the more students we get, the better financially we are, the better we can accommodate all the stuff we want to. It's that simple. And even if we're looking at repairing some concrete over rehabbing our phone system with sinking fund money, I think the investment in our phones and our image to the public is, is a far higher priority. That's it.
Trustee Thompson. And I want to speak on enrollment. I just went past Fitzgerald the other day. They have a big sign on the corner. They have every school listed where kids can be enrolled with the telephone number. Why aren't we doing that at our signs?
So we do have on our signs, open enrollment for the school district, but if you recommend that we put the phone numbers for each building.
Open enrollment for Wilkinson with this number, open enrollment for Halfman with this number, whatever school. Yeah. But if the phone system isn't working them right now, that's a moot point.
Yeah. Yeah. So also, you have to realize too that the building secretaries and principals just came back, so all buildings are open, so we can adjust the signs at the, on 11 Mile at ECC and put their enrollment numbers. We do have a Facebook ad out that's targeting families from age 20 to 50, and you can specifically target parents within, I think I did a 20-mile radius. So that is going out, is one for the district, is one for ECC, and is one for WMS because those are the two buildings that have the lowest enrollment. So I should get some data on that, and hopefully that reach, I think it reaches like 2, 2,600 people a day. And I will make the adjustment on the enrollment signs and put the phone numbers. We did look into replacing our systems with T-Mobile when we switched over our cell phones, and we saved like $400 for that. But the only thing about replacing our cell phone systems with T-Mobile was that they require a new phone in every office in every location, and I think we needed a total of, how many, like two, or was it 100?
No, it was around, it was between 200 and 220 physical phones for each conference room, each classroom, each office. So that, that price ballooned very quickly to where we immediately halted those conversations.
So would you guys like to, to have it where all the calls come to the administration building? And how, and then with the numbers zero through nine, those would be routed to the specific buildings? As opposed to press one if you want to talk to the superintendent? Like, do you want just all the calls to come to the Board Office, and that individual would transfer the person to whoever inside the Board Office, and then numbers zero, one, two, three, four, five will be assigned to the schools?
She would take care of transferring, correct?
So zero, one, two.
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
So if it calls, it'll say, hey, press one if you want to speak to the admin, if you want to speak to someone in central office or the administration building. Press two if you, you're interested in Madison Elementary School, three, four, five, and then whatever clerical gets the call, they will route it to the person in that building. So if I am calling the high school and Mrs. Margie answered the call and I want to talk to the principal, so then Ms. Margie will answer and say, hey, let me transfer you to the principal.
Trustee Chamberlain.
So I get the money aspect with each student being about $10,000, but I also see that what is the fastest route for a parent to get ahold of a school building? Because in an emergency, I don't want to be pressing, I don't, if I'm number, if I'm the third option, I don't want to be, press this for this, press this for that, press this for this. I might not be thinking to be able to, what is the fastest route to get to where I need to be?
To call the building directly. And most principals give out their cell phone numbers, so I don't know if they put it on their newsletters, but I know that everyone's cell phone number is something that's like given out, like my cell phone number. Anyone can call me at any time on my cell. So either A, call the building, or B, call the principal's cell phone.
Can we, everything in the world is basically like education. So we need to educate family members to know their buildings, direct line, to know how to reach the principal, so that we can avoid this. But as for new families and everything like that, can we, can't there be like, press one if you want to enroll, and then that goes?
Yeah, we can do that.
It's just the fastest route?
We can do, press one for the admin, or maybe press one if you want to enroll for new students. And then that will come to the admin building, and the admin can fan it out. And then press two for administration. Press three, three for, we'll just go in order, ECC, four for MES, five for WMS, and six for MHS. And then we can say MHS slash transcripts. That way, we can kind of have the same one go together.
And then most buildings also have, if you call in, as I was investigating this, when you hit zero, it takes you directly just to the office frontline, which is either 1,000, 2,000, 3,000. If we have it set to zero, we can have that go to another branch if that's what you want to do, a whole nother tree, which can lead to superintendent, assistant superintendent, and we can go that route, if you want to go that route.
I think what I hear you guys saying is that you want it to go to a route where it goes straight to a person or straight to a building.
Just the fastest, because picking a school for a kid is so scary for a parent.
Most parents call the school. I think the question and concern is, what if the school is not open and you want to enroll your kid into GSRP? Then how do we get in contact with them?
Should be a menu choice, then they talk to a human being. It's that simple.
You said menu and?
A menu choice for enrollment, and then they talk to a human being.
Yeah.
Period.
So number one would be enrollment, and that, that can go straight to the Board Office, and then the Board Office can fan them out to?
Ask them what they're inquiring about, and then transfer them from there.
Okay.
But it's important to have a human face on this.
Trustee Harp.
What were the other two top priorities that we were talking about? I heard that the phones was number three. What came before that?
Can you say again?
I heard that the phone systems was the third priority. What was above that?
Oh, so we initially, it was our network switches inside of the district. They're all starting to age, and they're starting to get to the point where they're ready to be replaced. Then in doing that and talking to Oakland Schools and planning that out, we verified that our fiber is actually aged beyond, and it needs to be replaced first. So that's the plan, is we're going to be replacing with E-rate dollars the fiber, and then what we have left over with E-rate, we're going to be looking at doing switches at that point.
And, uh, sorry, can I ask one more question? What's the, what's our lifespan of our current phone system? How long is this sustainable? At what point do we need, absolutely need to look for a different solution?
That's a very, very tough question. The system is self-sufficient, and other districts have moved on from that system, leaving a surplus of parts. So we could ride this Avaya system for, I can promise, at least two to three years on it.
I'm very familiar with computer equipment, and I understand switches get old, but I'm a little not understanding. How is the fiber optic degrading?
It has a lifespan. So as soon as there's a break.
But that's glass. How can that degrade?
I'm not a fiber expert, but I do know that it is standard practice for them to be replaced. There is something that we do every year where it gets serviced, it gets tested, tested, and everything like that.
Well, we put that fiber optic in, I believe, in 2018, was it?
None of us was here. We wouldn't know.
2018, 2019? I was here.
2019.
And I can't believe that it needs to be replaced this soon.
So it's not, it's not the entire fiber infrastructure that's being replaced, it's certain parts. So it's the inlet coming into the building. We have the middle school, which has fiber coming into it. It goes into the main MDF, and then it spreads it out. And most, in every other building, and in most buildings that have fiber coming in, it goes from an MDF and then goes to IDFs, which are just to spread it across the building. But in the middle school, we have to do it on the inside because it only goes to the MDF, and then it's copper wire going to all of the IDFs inside of the middle school. That was done well before Oakland Schools or before we.
I understand the copper, but the actual fiber optic connections, are they being disconnected and reconnected all the time or something? How can they, how can they wear out?
No, I mean, they get dirty as well on the connections. So they get tested, they have issues. It's just a piece of hardware.
20 years.
So I can get more information for you. Again, that's not my specialty. That would be my network admin, who's managing that project right now, partnering with Oakland Schools, and I can get that information to you and the thought process behind it.
I'd just like to reiterate my personal preference as a person answering the phone and sharing it to whoever needs to get it. That way, we know it's going to the proper person, and we have a welcome voice of person that is welcoming, prospective parent or somebody that may have a problem, and it's getting directly handled. I know, Travis, we also need to be able to figure out how to get ahold of you. I know you have a direct line, but you were the one I was trying to track down a week ago and couldn't get out of the loop. So I don't necessarily want to be able to call you directly. To just leave a message would have been fine.
So the thing about Travis is Travis is actually an Oakland School employee, and so he, for his safety or for his sanity, he does give out his personal cell number, but most, the way that he is reached is through a ticket. So most, we are, we're supposed to put in a ticket through Oakland Schools to say, hey, we need help. And then that also supports that he's needed here because it'll show everything that he's doing for us. So this year, we're moving forward, we're making sure everyone is trained on putting in a ticket to get assistance from Travis. So that's how he's really contacted, is via a ticket. And I do want to add one point about the sinking fund and if we can use this funding to replace phones and the fiber system online. So sinking fund has limited availability in terms of what we can use it for, so I can't, we can't use sinking funds to replace phones, which is why we're using.
It can be part of infrastructure.
It's not. So right now, currently, their superintendents, in this past year, they were in Lansing trying to change the language of sinking funds because technology and internet is not included in infrastructure, and what they're trying to do is fight and argue and say, hey, now in today's time, technology should be included in infrastructure. So hopefully, maybe in the next year, that bill, it changes the language for infrastructure, but right now, technology is not included in infrastructure for sinking funds.
Trustee Chamberlain.
I also just want to mention that when we ran for the sinking fund, we were very clear on some of the things that we were going to spend the money on, and I just don't want to deviate. I know things are going to come up as the years go on, but that's going to be a never-ending thing in a school district, and so I just don't want to get too far away from what we told the people we were going for the sinking fund originally, for one of which was the parking lot.
Anybody else? All righty. On to consent agenda, or you, you have something else.
Oh, I did want to hand out the newspaper with our graduates from the class of 2025, so.
Very nice article.
Yes, if you didn't get one in the mail, you can have one. And our class of 2025, this year, they earned a total of $5,482,000 in scholarships and grants. So congratulations to the class of 2025. The article features our top 10 students as well as highlights from the graduation. And then at the bottom of the article, there's also an enrollment ad for school of choice. So congratulations. Great job, Madison High staff. That's it.
I, I was very pleased to see that. Thank you. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the Board or any citizen requests separate discussion of these items, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the Board of Education action items portion of the agenda. The two things under our consent agenda today, approval of minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting July 7th, 2025, approval of July 2025 expenditures in the amount Need a maker in support. Trustee Thompson. I'd like to make a motion, the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion or questions? I think. All right, we'll move on. We need a vote. Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Under new business policy and bylaw update, we have two members, Rebecca and Gloria, that attended those meetings and then for bylaws. And then policy, I know we need to get some dates together so that we have Rebecca, Gloria, and my, is it Melissa with Carlos being the?
No, it's Carlos.
Carlos and then Melissa's the alternate?
Yes, and we do have dates.
Last I heard, we did not.
Ms. Perry emailed us a few days ago. It's the second Thursday of every month, from 10 to 12 in the morning.
Can I add something to? So Scott from Neola sent out a list of all policy and bylaws that need updating. And he is working with us to give us a plan of action. And I put that on the agenda just to kind of get you guys' feedback on how do you guys want to handle it? Do you guys want to just do like five at a time? Because we have a lot that has not been updated in a while. And what's our goal? So I put that on the agenda to kind of create a goal so I can know how we're going to work towards completing all these updates.
Trustee Chambliss?
I liked the way that Scott split them up with green being the ones that we had already done and the ones that were blank we needed to look at and that he removed all the ones we kind of don't use. I definitely want to know how many we're going to have just so I can pre-read them and have thoughts prepared. But I do like the idea of like five.
So five a month?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Well, can, we'll get other income input, but I want to see the whole list. I don't want the ones that Scott decided we didn't need to see.
So Scott does not decide what we need or not need to see?
Did I misunderstand what you said?
No, there's some that like-
That have been updated in green. What happens is, this is how Neola works. There's policy that their company introduced or bylaw updates that they introduced that has changed based off of the changes in the laws. So there has been numerous updates that have came out prior to me in like 2020, 2018. So what he did was he put a list together of all the updates that have came out that we have not addressed as a board. So it's not about what he thinks and what he wants. It's based off of the changes in the laws that we have not adapted to in our bylaws.
Okay. So the bylaws?
Or policy, I'm not, I'm not on-
We're not at policy.
Okay, I don't deal with bylaws.
They went through the bylaws.
Yes, we finished all the bylaws.
So what I would like to see happen, and I'd like input from everybody, is see what was covered, any potential changes that were made. Because we as a board will be the ones that decide what we're going to agree with.
Right, so most of-
And then policy is going to be much more specific, and I get that. Bylaws are mostly law.
Right.
But we still have some input.
Correct.
So I would like to see maybe all the bylaws. And then we can move on to policy and small chunks.
So with the, with the bylaws, what we did is we went through all of them. We updated them based 99% mostly just on statute. Very few, I think Gloria and I only actually even gave an opinion on maybe five, if that. But all of them that were updated or altered in any way, he was putting in a Word document that he was sending to Ms. Perry and then Ms. Perry would run it by legal just to have, make sure that Joe agreed, even though Scott runs everything based on statute and the law, just to have a second person to confirm because Scott's in a different state. And then once he, once Joe said yes, everything, any changes made were appropriate, then they would have to come to all the board members. Then we would review it and vote on it as a board.
Don't we have to read it?
Bylaws have to be read multiple times in order to be-
I was just shortening the process by we would review it and then vote on it.
Right. Trustee Harp, Trustee Kimball, what's your input?
I'm not on the committees, so.
Well, how do you want the process to go? Do you want to look at the bylaws, have a chance to read through them?
Well, the board should be exposed to the bylaws before they're chosen or adopted, yes.
Yeah.
So can we do the bylaws as one piece? Or do you want it in portions like the policy?
Or, yeah. You mean for when we discuss and-
Yeah.
Approve it?
Well, each bylaws, a bylaw on its own, is it not?
Right.
So I don't understand what you mean by a bunch.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to maybe do it in thirds.
Thirds?
If we're going to have to read it, that's a lot.
For the bylaws?
Yes. And policies is going to be even bigger.
I understand policy is going to be a lot more.
You got to remember, we only altered like maybe at most eight or nine of them. We didn't alter that many. Most of them, we kept the same. We reviewed all of them, but we only-
The ones that are altered, then maybe do half in here.
Yeah, there's only like between less than 10 that we even altered.
And we need to see all the ones that he is suggesting that we change.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For bylaws, I would like to remove myself from that responsibility because I don't think that's me. So I think that you can reach out to Joe, if President Holder, and send them over to Joe for approval. I don't think I should be a part of the process.
Did Scott send you the Word document?
No, he has not.
Okay, I'll email him after the meeting and ask him to send it and I'll make sure you can-
But the recommendations from Scott with bylaws and policy, he says that yes, you need to send them to legal. I was just pulling up my notes. And he says that you can bring them to the board and they have to, they do have to go up under two readings before voting on them finally. So if you guys can, once you guys have your final draft or if you want me to continue to have this on the agenda as a business item, oh, business, we can continue to have it. But once the draft is finalized, then send it to me and I'll send it to Scott. But I don't want to be in the middle.
Your plate's more than full.
Thank you.
Okay, he just said that that was how he does it. He said, I'm keeping a Word document of any changes we made and I'll send it to Ms. Perry. She sends it to legal, so I'll get the copy and send it to you.
So gentlemen, is that okay?
Sounds good.
All righty, as long as we're all on the same page. All righty, Open Air Market.
Mr. Andrus, do you want to come up and?
Evening, sir.
Evening. My name is Aaron Andrus, Special Education Director. I'm excited to announce the Third Annual Open Air Market and Fall Fest, which will be held on Saturday, September 13th from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Wilkinson Middle School. The two previous markets were held over the summer. This year, we decided to move it to September where we can combine with an open enrollment or school enrollment time, which is before Count Day. We also want to encourage a lot more families to come since school is in session. So there's no vacations or, or other events that would interfere. So we're hoping to draw more attention that way. We added a Fall Fest theme to it as well. All proc, oh, so it'll be a community-centered event with local crafters, vendors, rummage sale, food, entertainment, used technology and fundraising opportunities for school clubs, teams and other student organizations. All the proceeds from the event will benefit the school groups that participate and will support district at-risk program, programming. So we're just asking for support in this, spreading the word throughout the community. We are opening the event to local organizations that are not selling, but that are providing information. So for example, the Madison Heights Youth Coalition. Youth Assistance, they can participate for free as long as they're not selling items. So we're looking to bring the community together for this event. So any questions? Okay, thank you.
Next, discussion on superintendent goals for the upcoming year. Want to start?
So at your request, I thought you guys wanted to give me feedback on what you guys want included in my plan for this school year. And then at the next meeting, I'll present my goals to you guys. So I would love to hear your feedback. I think one of my number one goals is to make sure that we stay within our budget for the 25-26 school year and also try to increase our fund balance for the 25-26 school year. That's my top priority. So if there's anything else or can I get your feedback on other things?
It'd be nice to improve test scores, too.
Any else?
When you say test scores, are you talking about our growth test scores?
Our overall growth for our students, yeah. I mean, that should be one of the goals, too, shouldn't it?
Oh, of course. We have that in every, all of our evaluations.
I have a couple. It was requested for me to put or ask if we could discuss putting in the correspondence. They were talking about phones and emails. And our phone calls having a 24-hour window for response. I have a problem with that. I, I am just saying. I'm asking, I'm repeating what the request was.
So this is a specific goal for me to, is I have a return? I, I just want feedback because I, I don't-
I am reiterating what I was saying.
Okay.
That's fine.
And I- I have a question, which kind of is a little unrelated. Were we able to sustain the driver's ad or did that go by the wayside?
No, we still haven't.
And that's something we also need to continue to to our horn about. Anybody else have a concern or something that they would like to see potentially added? Trustee Chambliss? Nothing to add to the old one?
No, I think that enrollment and staying within budget while improving test scores is, I mean, we're asking her to do a huge thing with the test scores with almost no money to throw at it. And so I think when you ask for those three big things, you know, make a program, but don't spend a penny, improve the test scores, get kids in the building, improve enrollment, but you don't have any money. And then also on top of that, stay in budget. I mean, those three things are the three like biggest things we could ask of her. And I think anything else at this point just seems a little bit smaller right now. And so we're asking three massive projects that alone, any one of those three could be its own goal.
Were required to set goals, so.
I understand.
This is the time for everybody to, if they have a specific concern, to share it.
If you guys think of any within the next two weeks, can you email me? And I also encourage the community to email me as well or staff and families. If there are any goals that you want us to have in Madison, I would love to hear from everyone.
A lot smoother than it possibly could have been. All right, Board Action Items. Approval of the 25-26 calendar.
For that, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the addendum to add two items.
Would you like to add?
The first one, an amendment to add to change the meeting time from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the second amendment is to no longer record meetings. We'll start with a motion to amend the addendum. Do I have a second? All right, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
This would be to reiterate, we have turned the meeting back to 7:00 o'clock.
This is, this is just to amend the agenda first.
I understand. I am saying we need to add it to the agenda somewhere. Yes. So can we do a one right after the calendar?
Just to do five D and E?
Yeah, D and E?
Yeah.
Would that be better? I don't have a problem with that. So six to seven will be D and not to record meetings. So you're right, this is just to amend the agenda. Any other discussion? Call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Calendar. The administration recommends the approval of the proposed 25-26 school year calendar. The calendar has been developed in collaboration with the district leadership, the teachers' association and relevant stakeholders to ensure alignment with instructor, instructional priorities, state requirements and community needs. Key dates, including the first and last days of school, break and professional development, have been reviewed for compliance and consistency. Approval of the calendar at this time follows and allows families and staff to plan accordingly for the upcoming school year. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the 25-26 school year calendar as presented.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approves its 2025-26 school year calendar as presented.
I'll support.
Trustee Thompson supports. Any discussion? Trustee Chambliss?
Ms. Perry, I was told to ask you, why are we starting before Labor Day?
Because we don't want to go until July.
But other schools start in-
And we want to keep our winter break.
You want to keep your winter break at two weeks?
That week in February.
I'm relaying a question.
Yeah.
So, so it's because of the extra breaks in December and February? Okay.
Well, not in December, but the February break, that one week.
Okay.
And we've always started, haven't we always started before Labor Day?
We did and then we didn't and then we did, I think.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Yeah, approval of the new Bethel contract. The administration recommends approval of a continued partnership with Armage Development Corporation, a subsidiary of New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church Incorporated. This agreement allows Madison District Public Schools to utilize the church's parking lot as a designated pickup location for students residing in Pontiac during the 25-26 school year. This collaboration has provided a safe and reliable transportation access point and supports equitable access to educational services. The term of the agreement remains unchanged from the 24-25 school year with no additional cost to the district. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the agreement for continued use of the parking lot for the student pickup in Pontiac for the 25-26 school year at no additional cost. Need a maker in support.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approves the agreement with the Amage Development Corporation for continued use of the parking lot for student pickup in Pontiac for the 25-26 school year at no additional cost.
I'll support.
Trustee Thompson supports. Any discussion? Trustee Thompson supports. Any discussion? Trustee Chambliss?
Ms. Perry, I like that there's no increase this year after last year and everything. But did we look at other location opportunities? I know that we had talked last time because they weren't doing such big hikes each year.
Yeah, so they did try to increase the rate this year, and I came back and just told them, "We cannot afford an increase." And then he came back and allowed us to continue to use it. The problem is just making sure that the kids are safe, and we really don't have any other options. We can try using a different public location, but what I'm afraid of is that if we continue, let's say we start using, for example, a Myers parking lot. I don't want them to tell us that, "Hey, you're violating our property," and then we have to change a pickup location in the middle of the school year. And then how do we go back and get those families that were used to being at New Bethel, then we change to Myers? So, at this time, we don't have another option. We did research it last year. We looked into another church location, but their parking lot was not large enough for us, the buses, to swing into it. And then they said, "Well, you can use the street," but the street was at a light. And so, what I didn't want was the bus to have their stop sign, and then kids are crossing over the street, and cars are turning, and then that's an accident waiting to happen. So, at this point, we do not have another option. And we did canvas Pontiac last year to figure out what could we have done differently.
Okay. Can we consider talking to Myers and see if we could use, like, a far corner at the very, like, our Myers, there's, like, 300 parking spots up front, and then you have that big area right before there's, like, a big area of grass. And if they were to be there at the very back or the side of the parking lot, it's well lit, it's, you know, and things like that, could we talk to them? My only concern is, we can't guarantee to be able to afford a price hike, and nor do I think we should next year. And if they're already trying, and you're like, "Come back for a second year," are they going to give us a no increase for a second year? I think for just using their parking lot, they're asking quite a bit, and they wanted to go up again. So, we kind of know their motivation for this, so maybe we could at least try, or at least talk to parents and explain to them.
So, I think the problem is that when you're thinking about these larger corporations, so all I can do is go in and ask, "Hey, is there a store manager available?" Then the store manager says, "Well, that is out of my control. You need to contact this person." So, what I do recommend is that as, if you guys can reach out maybe to Oakland County officials and say, like, "Hey, who can we reach?" The problem with Myers and those larger corporations is that they have to go above to get approval for us to use their property because we can be a liability. So, if you guys know any officials in Oakland County that may know some local businesses that may be willing to allow us to use their parking lot, like, near Pontiac, I would love the support. But I just get the runarounds. I get, here's the store manager, the store manager says, "Here's corporate," and then corporate responding back to me is like, "Why? Who am I for them to respond back to?"
Well, if we're even going to consider that, then we should not renew this contract tonight, then. It should be tabled to the next meeting until you have time to check those other alternatives out. Because once we renew this contract, we're paying them for a whole year.
I need support with reaching out to the higher being. Like, my hands are tied at this point.
Trustee? Yeah. Trustee Chambliss?
I would be happy to reach out to Myers, corporate, and as well as Oakland County. I will do it tonight when I get home, if that's okay.
So, what location are we considering?
Which one do you like?
I don't know. So, I would have to go back out to Pontiac and canvas. We would have to figure out, this will require, I think, if we're going to reach out to corporate and change the location, I don't think this is something we should do three weeks before school. Because we already have kids that are committed to Madison from Pontiac that have been here at Madison. If we changed our location, we can definitely lose that population. Or if we don't have a final location within two or three weeks when the kids come back, then what are we going to do? I don't think we should hold off. I think that we should start planning this year. We should start canvassing throughout the year. Hey, what does this lot look like in winter, spring, summer, and fall, and then go from there. I think right now is too late.
Well, that's why I originally said, could we look into this for next year? But I'm more than happy to reach out to Myers. I'm more than happy to reach out to Oakland County. I'll drive out to the Myers tomorrow and take photos and videos of what it is, whatever you need. I just think spending, I think we're at close to $30,000, aren't we? No, what is it? 20?
20, hold on. In the packet. What is it?
The agreement's in there, but it doesn't state an amount.
Oh, it's 25,000, sorry. We're spending 25,000 for a school year, and that's a lot of... I'm just saying, 25,000 could be spent on...
Picking up over 100 kids.
Yeah, but I think that if, I mean, if the parent is told, "You were dropping your child off at Bethel. Instead, we're going to ask you to drop them off in this Myers." We include a picture of the Myers with a little dot of where in the parking lot they're dropping them off the first week or so, just in case kids don't come the first couple days. We have staff out there, you know, to ride the bus with it, wearing shirts to, like, so parents know where to meet, just for the first couple days. I think we could change. I think that 25,000 compared to 85,000, it just seems like a lot of money to add that we could have for the school year, especially if that money could go to, like, school supplies, teachers' classrooms, sports uniforms, reading people, like, whatever. I'm just saying, 25,000's a lot.
I just think it's late in the year to try to change locations.
I know. I was hoping that somebody else would have stepped up, like, around that area, maybe offered their parking lot.
Trustee Harb?
I agree. I think it's too late this year to change course on that. I think it's going to take more time than we expect, especially if we don't want that support, and I'm assuming in paper and writing. Are there, are there any complaints of the current location? Are the parents happy with it? Is there any concerns that would give us reason to change, regardless if we find another location?
So, in the past, there were complaints about, I guess, the, this contract was well in place before I even became superintendent or principal of Madison. So, I felt like that I remember there being issues with, I guess, they're supposed to, the doors are supposed to be open for kids in the morning time and at nighttime when they're dropped off. And I think there was a problem where they were not allowing our kids in the building. And I know right now, they still do not allow the kids in the building because you have to realize that's a liability issue. Because if parents know that the building is open, then that just creates an opportunity for them to say, "Well, I'll pick up the kid when I can." So, I think that right now, we're just using it as a pickup and drop-off location. In the event that they have the building open, they do allow us to go in if needed, but we don't want to advertise that because then it's going to be a latchkey service that's not legal.
If I could, one more question. Related but not directly to this, are there any other items that we should be planning well in advance of a school year? Like, I mean, it's too late to change course on this item now, but is there any other opportunities that we missed by not addressing it sooner?
So, what we can do, in the finance department, we can put together a list of annual contracts that come up at the beginning of every school year that you guys should be made aware of. Like, for example, we have to pay for NWEA testing sites. We have to pay for Horizon testing. We have to pay for this. So, we can put together for the next meeting, a list of, like, annual contracts that come up that we definitely need in our budget.
That would be awesome. Because I feel like we're missing opportunities here, and this isn't helping us year after year.
Ask a question, and then you can have the floor.
Absolutely.
I guess I'm just wondering if there's a public police library, something central that is safe for the kids, that allows their public...
I agree.
...to congregate. I don't know that there is or isn't. I don't know how much further it might be from the pickup point. I think this needs passed tonight, but I definitely think, not to say that you haven't explored options, I'm just saying, maybe we need to look at a few more. And, yes, Trustee Chambliss?
I don't think it's too late. I think that if we have, the next meeting is August 18th. We can easily tell parents in a week the difference of driving your kids to New Bethel. It's not like their kids are not getting picked up. It's not like we're canceling busing. We're not making a massive change. It's just a location versus another. And it's like changing a bus stop. And I do think we should at least try for 25,000. We have staff talking about the things that we can't provide, though. And we have many things that need to be done around the buildings. And 25,000 is not some great shakes that's going to make massive changes, but it will, I mean, it is a good amount of money. It could be used for things that do impact student life. And so, I do think that we should, I think that we should postpone this vote until August 18th.
Trustee Thompson?
I'm, I, I think it's too late, but my point is, they, do they not allow, I know you said we have over 100 children. Are you saying they don't allow them in in inclement weather either?
We never needed to go in. So, right now, the parents have been great about picking up their kids on time. I mean, maybe buses wait, like, maybe 10 or 15 minutes, but it's not anything that's putting them in overtime. So, we have not needed to go in during that time. But we also have to realize that this is a church. They're not open during normal business hours. So, we can't expect them unless we have a staff member there, and we can't afford that. My whole thing is just thinking, for me, if we wait until April, until the 18th, that's a week before school starts. So...
That's a lot of kids to notify.
Exactly.
And how many buses?
So, we do one, two in the morning, and then we do one in the afternoon. We were able to combine our middle school and our high school route for the afternoon, now that the times are the same. So, prior to, high school and middle school was on two different routes because middle school did not get out until 3, like, after 3. So, when we changed our times last year, last year, middle school and elementary got out around the same time. But you can't have those middle school kids on the bus with the elementary kids. So, now that middle school and high school are closer in time, with the enrollment we had last year, we were able to just have one route. Hopefully, we have an increase in enrollment this year, and we will need two routes.
Okay. That's kind of information you'll need to know, Rebecca.
Trustee Chambliss?
I just, my last thing is that if we wait till August 18th, either A, there's no changes because Myers says, "No, we don't find a safe place. Nothing's working out. There's no changes." We pass it August 18th, and we go like we were going to do if we passed it tonight. Or B, we save the district 25,000, and we have a week to let parents know that they're just rerouting, maybe half a mile over. It might be closer to their house. It might not. But I think parents, the week going into school, are double-checking their kids' classes, school start times, their schedule, things like that. So, to tell them, instead of Bethel, we need you to go to Myers, but your kid's still getting driven to and from school, I feel like, as a parent, that's acceptable to me. But that's just my opinion.
Trustee Kimball?
Well, what are the chances we could change this agreement to a monthly agreement and give us time to work on that? Because I agree, 25,000, it's not a huge amount, but this stuff all adds up. And this is why we're in budgeting problems. We need to start looking at 25 here, 20 there, wherever we can make gains to stop the cuts to other vital programs. And why can't we change to a monthly installment on this, divide it up by 12, or however you do it for the school year, and buy us time to investigate other options? Has anyone investigated the school district, the former school district of Pontiac, if they have a location that we can use?
I don't think they're going to let us use their location to take their kids.
You don't know that, though.
So, I'm looking at the map right here, and I'm trying to figure out, like, what's in, like, a radius of the location. And the only thing that I see that looks, I see an indoor tennis club.
That was going to be my question.
How far away is Oakland Intermediate Schools? They're in Pontiac?
The ISD?
Yeah.
Hold on one second.
Possibly we could use one of their parking lots.
Do we have to decide on New Bethel tonight? Do we sort of have time to decide on that?
We have to vote tonight, or postpone it until August 18th.
Well, would the contract with them still be good if we postponed?
I can ask them. So, I can ask.
Let me ask this. What if we're making a payment August 15th and a payment in February? What if we asked them to only do the contract for the first semester? That would give us a whole semester to check it out.
Yeah, something's better than nothing.
Okay. We can just approve a first semester contract, and we can just go semester by semester, and we'll have a semester as opposed to two weeks to look. I think trying to find a new location is two weeks.
I agree. It's just to compromise.
It's too, it's too much, especially two weeks before a school start.
So, the discussion on the floor right now is to make the contract a six-month and give us time to look. Obviously, then, the maker, Trustee Chambliss, and Trustee Thompson would have to change their motion in support. Trustee Chambliss?
President Holder, I would like to change the motion on the table to read that I make a motion that the Board of Education approves the agreement with Amage Development Corporation for continued use of the parking lot for student pickup in Pontiac for the 2025-2026 school year, first semester at $12,500.
Support agree?
I'll support.
I'll support.
And discussion. Are we good? Everybody is good? Okay.
I just have fears that we're going to lose the parking lot, not have something else available.
If there's a problem, just Superintendent Perry will certainly get ahold of us. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up, approval of the parking lot ceiling project, Madison Elementary. To maintain the safety and functionality of the parking lot and Madison Elementary School, the district identified the need for ceiling and maintenance work. This preventative maintenance supports the district's long-term facilities plan. After reviewing multiple proposals, the district recommends moving forward with True North Asphalt to complete the ceiling work at Madison Elementary. The company meets all scope and quality requirements for the project. It is recommended the Board of Education approve contracting with True North Asphalt to complete the ceiling of Madison Elementary School parking lot with the project funded through District Syncing Fund. I need a maker in support. Trustee Thompson?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve contracting with True North Asphalt to complete the ceiling of the Madison Elementary School parking lot with the project funded through the District Syncing Fund.
Thank you. We have support.
I'll support.
Trustee Kimball? Discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up, there's a vote to officially change our meetings back to 7:00 o'clock. We had previously said we would try 6. I know that the majority of the board wanted to go back to 7:00, so this is our time to decide what we want to do. Even though this meeting was moved back to 7:00, it was brought to my attention, we did make a vote to try 6:00. So, we do need to make a vote to bring it back. We did make a vote to try six. So, we do need to make a vote to bring it back to seven. So, we need a maker in support, please.
Madam President, I make a motion to move our meetings to 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Support?
I'll support.
Discussion. Non-roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss? Yes. Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, the motion to not record the meetings. I need a maker in support.
Madam President, I make a motion that we no longer record and stream our meetings.
Thank you. Support? Trustee Thompson. Discussion.
President Holder.
Trustee Chambliss.
We have a very divided community. We also have a large voting base and community population that are elderly, disabled. They cannot leave their homes. I know because I delivered their food through the food pantry. They could not come here if they tried. So, they need the ability to be able to watch us. We also have a large portion of our population in our community who don't feel comfortable coming in this building and being at these meetings for various reasons. They also should have access to these meetings. These meetings allow people who are working to watch them later. They allow people who can't be here because of scheduling to, to watch them at home. It provides transparency, accountability. We're held to our words. The population can see us. We're not some hidden little group off in the corner voting on things that impact not only their tax dollars, but their children and not being held to where they can see it. The community has spoken on this topic countless times. They have overwhelmingly said, please record. It is very important to us. And we have talked about stopping the recordings multiple times. And every single time, we have had countless people speak out against it. They're not here anymore because they don't feel comfortable coming here. So, to deny them the meetings and tell them, if you can feel uncomfortable, we don't care. You have to come in and be at the meetings in person. That's not fair. We've done damage to this community as a Board of Education, in a district. We need to be held accountable for that. And to take away their right to these meetings is doing further damage and disrespecting the fact that we're not even trying to make things better.
Anybody else? Trustee?
Uh, I would like to say that there's a certain element out there that likes to take our meetings, re-edit them, put words in people's mouth.
First Amendment.
This is the same reason, excuse me, I'll let you talk. This is the same reason Lampheer and other school districts do not record or stream their meetings. I don't think we're asking too much to no longer do that.
Oh, put your hand down.
No.
Trustee Perry, do you have any thoughts on this? Oh, my God, Superintendent Perry.
Well, I do agree with the streaming because I do think we do have a large community, community in terms of like our Pontiac parents. We do have some staff members that just can't be here at 7:00 PM. I do not agree with the recording because I think that's when it gives people or the press an opportunity to go back and re-record and nitpick and then take our words and take our statements and just turn them into whatever and, or use, use them however they want to use them. But in terms of streaming, I, I do agree with that because I think some people can't get here. And I, I'm not just talking about the community, but we also have to realize we have a larger community outside of Madison Heights. So, if there's Pontiac parents, if there's a staff member that has a kid and I have to get home to my child and I can't come to this board meeting at seven, then maybe I do want to watch it online so I can stay informed. Those are just my thoughts.
Trustee Thompson.
I agree with the streaming. I sometimes do not agree with the recording. We, we have been blamed for parents not showing up. This was not our doing. There were, when I first got on the board, six, seven years ago, people who would come and couldn't control their behaviors at board meetings and were asked to leave. This was not a board problem. This was a public problem. If they don't feel comfortable coming, this isn't our doing. And a lot of those people who were on the board with me back then are, are gone now anyway. I don't understand why, when we say things, it comes across that they feel like they need to change our words. We aren't trying to hide anything. We have open meetings for a reason. I agree with not recording. We don't really have to record, but I do think that we need to stream.
Do you realize when we stream that they can be recorded off Facebook, though? It's the same effect.
Trustee Harp.
Is there, is there a cost to doing the, the streaming, the recordings? Does it take up server space, hard drive space? Like, is there additional cost to us for doing that? And, uh, do we have proof or evidence that people are watching the streamings? Are they actually going to the recordings? We can see, like on YouTube, right? We can see if people are like accessing it. So, do we have that evidence that it is being utilized?
Um, I do not have the cost. I was not prepared for that. However, I can go to our YouTube channel, I think, and I can see how many views are... So, right now, I see that we're live and we have 10 individuals watching today. That are our history. Can some, can I get a, give me like three minutes?
Yeah, can I ask, uh, can I follow up on this, though, real quick?
Sure.
I do, I do agree that we should stream it absolutely for the public. I know there's other avenues. There's other options. There's other ways they can reach out. This isn't the only way, but I do agree with having that option. Uh, I agree with trustee Kimball. Uh, if someone wants to record it, they can use recording software even if they're watching it live. So, I, I, I think that's just a risk we take. No, thank you.
Our words can't be used against them. We either, us, we either said it or we didn't. They're not using AI. They're not changing what we say. They just take snippets in their own context. And that's okay because the First Amendment says that's okay. And to take that away because we're worried about them, what does it say if we say we're gonna get rid of recordings because we don't want you to use the words that we said? Because we don't want to hear them? Because you, what? They're our words. And this issue with the parents, trustee Thompson, with all due respect, because I do very much respect you, is absolutely our doing. And even if it's not Carlos Harp's doing because he wasn't here, it's this district's doing. And the three of us were on this board. Mr. Kimball was in the community. All of us played a role in this. And if we don't accept that, that's a problem because we absolutely had issues. And as for the parents who acted out at meetings, did I agree with all their behaviors? No, absolutely not. I'm vehemently against any form of violence, which includes throwing rocks or anything at a trustee or superintendent. I don't agree with that at all. However, when you play with someone's children and you toy with their families, you're gonna see them at their worst. People, especially parents, will fight for their children tooth and nail. And when we had a superintendent toying with families, you are going to see a mother or father react negatively. Or when you see them do, or when they see us doing something that they truly believe their taxpayer dollars are going to something evil, they're gonna react. You're judging them based on their worst moments, not all the hundreds of hours that they volunteered or the times that they read the third graders non-stop, or some of them on the board at the time, or all the different things. You're judging them at their worst moment in a meeting that was very heated. And then you're saying it wasn't our doing. It was absolutely our doing. And either way, Madison District is held accountable for it, and so we need to deal with the consequences of that. And what benefit do we have to cutting off the recording other than poking a beehive to say, we know you like these. We're gonna take them? There, it does not hurt us to put them on YouTube. It costs us nothing to put them on YouTube. So, to take them away is just to rile up the same issue we've had multiple times. And we've done this countless times. Why it's being brought up again? You just want to take a toy away from a kid just to see them cry. I don't get it.
Trustee, that's, no. Trustee Chambliss. I disagree wholeheartedly. That was not one moment. That was months and months and months of verbal abuse, of attacking us, of attacking. Uh, it, this was not one moment. These people had to have the police involved. We had people that cannot come back to this district in any way, shape, or form. This was not one instance. This just continued to build and build and build. And yet, we all had people that we supported on either side for that. Um, I don't think that was necessarily right or wrong. We definitely were given bad information by someone that stood in the middle. But regardless of that fact, it went too far. Um, I, I know that, or I suspect this came up because of the, um, latest thing about a week ago with, uh, a news company putting, using statements in, in a in unmeaning way. Um, there was just a snippet followed by Channel 7 trying to get a hold of the superintendent. Um, we don't need that negativity. We don't need it anymore. I will agree to stream. I, I don't want to record. I was always on the fence. Trustee Chambliss, I understand your passion, but you've absolutely... It was kind of your, your vocalism that kind of made me decide I really don't want to record anymore.
That's fine. I'll have someone here recording. First Amendment.
Madam President.
Excuse me, why are you interrupting? I didn't interrupt you.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Kimball.
The families that she's referring to that have problems with this district are ones that supported L. Morrison and that whole corrupt regime. Nobody on this board did anything wrong or against the public interest. That's ridiculous. We're all sitting here today because some of us took action against what was going on. And it's the same people that supported those people that want to re-edit meetings and this is a video together to say stuff that was not said. And that's why I'm against it, recording or even streaming, only because there's no requirement for us to do that. Other districts like Lampheer, everyone compares us to Lampheer, does not stream or record their meetings either. So, I don't see what the problem is.
So, the motion right now on the table is not to record meetings. So...
President Holder.
Once I'm done.
You gotta do discussion before you can bring up for the...
We are in the middle of discussion. Hang on one second. I'm not calling for the vote. I want to make clear the motion on the floor right now is not to record the meetings just so that we can be absolutely clear. It does not say don't stream. That was the motion that was made. So...
I think I made the motion to record and, and not to stream either.
I, I wrote down trustee Kimball not to record the meetings. So, I need to make certain of what your motion was not to record. You want to change it to not record and stream?
Correct.
That's a whole separate motion. Trustee Kimball, what, what is your pleasure?
I believe I said record and stream.
Yeah, his, his motion was to, I wrote it down, and he said to not record and stream.
And trustee Thompson, do you support that motion?
No. I think we should continue to stream, but not record.
Need a new motion if we want to stream and not record.
No, vote on the current motion.
Yeah, I think we have to vote on the first motion.
Well, right now, it doesn't have support. So, unless somebody doesn't support it, she is withdrawn of support.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was just, oh, I wrote down was not to record.
If someone else wants to support it, then we can definitely vote on it. This motion feels with no support. So, do we want to make a new motion?
I really don't see the point because streaming, they can easily record it. So, what's the difference?
Trustee Thompson, you have something to say?
That's up to every individual if they want to record it. Right now, we only have, tonight, 10 people who are, are even watching out of a whole community. It, I, I don't think we should say that they can't record. We are saying we don't want to record it.
Who else have something to say? We want to make a new motion. Is there one for the floor? To stream but not record? Or do we want to leave it the way it is?
Madam President, I will make the motion to stream and not record just honestly to see where the board stands on this.
And I will support.
I, uh, despite me failed. Trustee Harp and trustee Thompson, support it. Now, we'll do discussion for streaming, not recording. Chambliss.
We represent thousands of families. They've spoken countless times that they want this access. So, you're gonna go against the people voting, um, you into that seat. And then also, 80-plus-year-olds or 65-year-olds who are disabled don't necessarily know how to do some of these things. So, they know how to get on YouTube because they watch YouTube, but they don't necessarily know how to have it streamed and then if it disappears, or how to stream it at a specific time if they're not gonna be able to be here and things like that. You're asking people who may not be technologically advanced to do something that they may not know how to. This is against what the people who voted us in this seat have asked for. They have said this countless times. And we have pushed away and alienated this community for years, whether you want to take blame for it or not. So, to say, you either have to come here when you don't feel comfortable, some of you don't feel safe, or you don't get to see, or we'll stream it and we hope you know how to find it. Again, why this is coming up for the countless time, when we have talked about this over and over, it is what the community wants. It's what the voters want. Staff has asked for it because they can't always watch these meetings and they like to stay up to date on what's happening at their place of employment. And there's no reason. It benefits nothing. It doesn't save us money. It doesn't save us a position. It does nothing. You are doing this just to be spiteful, in my opinion.
Trustee Harp.
We have other avenues to see the outcomes of the meetings. We have meeting minutes for a reason.
Look at our minutes. They don't say how we talk.
Trustee Chambliss. That's like the fourth time you've interrupted. You've got to stop.
Review meetings.
We have other options. I'm all for streaming. I think that's okay. I, I would, I'm still curious of the data. Are people actually watching these videos? We have years and years worth of minutes sitting in binders right now. Is anyone looking at that? So, the information is out there. Someone just has to ask for it. And there's more, I'm sorry, there's more than one way to get it than just to record it.
Superintendent Perry.
So, it seems like if we go back to all the other meetings, so, um, let me go back to... I'm just gonna do this year. Is this 2025, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, in March of 2025, it does not tell me how many we had live. It just tells me how many views. So, there were 78 viewers on the March meeting, March 17th meeting. March 17th meeting of 2025. Within the last, the highest number of viewers we had was on July 25th, 2022. That meeting had, it was a special meeting. That meeting had 276 views. So in March of 2025, that meeting had, March 3rd, 2025, that meeting had 61 views. April 7th meeting had 89 views. I'm sorry, it's not in order by date. I'm trying to get to May. May 5th meeting had 77 views. So on average, I would say there is about 60 views.
Is that for it being live or is that viewing the recordings? Or can we not see that?
So it doesn't separate how many, let me look real quick, hold on. It does not tell me how many watched while live. It just shows how many people have viewed it, period. So no, it doesn't differentiate versus view after the meeting and view while live. Mm-hmm.
Trustee Chambliss?
Uh, let's see. Board items, officers and committee reports. 6A committee reports. 6A1 GRC report. 6A2 Parks and Recreation Committee. CA3 HREC report. So you say, look at the meeting minutes, but yet the meeting minutes don't say anything. It's just really just a breakdown of each action item and who voted what. It doesn't say what any of the discussion is, who said what, what opinions were, what the arguments for and against it were. So it's not a good option for someone who wants to stay informed. Our biggest issue in this district is getting people information and making sure they're making informed decisions. And to take away something, again, that doesn't benefit us, to take it away is silly. And 60 views, that's a graduating class. This is, this is a personal issue that has been brought up countless times. It is not what's best for Madison. It's not what's best for this board. It's not what's best for this community. It is a personal issue that a trustee has brought up. That's why it was left off the agenda and brought in as an amendment to the agenda because it was on your paper before the meeting even started. I walked in and saw it. Already knew this was coming. So this was a pre-set-up thing to not put on the agenda.
Show me where it is. Wrong.
Motion to go back to 7:00.
Yeah.
So he was changing the agenda. So...
That is not...
There's no reason that this wasn't on the agenda.
You are again making suppositions.
I'm always wrong, okay?
Well, you yourself had called me and said, you said many things for years about me that weren't true.
We both said that because of a previous people.
Possibly.
What's that got to do with anything?
This could not be a personal thing.
Then why do you have motions to amend the agenda on your paper before he made the motion?
I wanted to add it. I wanted to add it.
You helped make the agenda. Why didn't you make it?
Because I talked to Chris Dara Friday and she said, we expect to 7:00, but we made a motion, I explained, to change it to 6:00. So please make a motion to change it to 7:00.
So you knew the agenda was being changed before the meeting started. But the point is, this is a personal issue that's been brought up countless times because you have issues with part of the community.
No, you make it personal. You perpetuating... You keep perpetuating that it's personal.
Do you want meeting dates?
It's personal for you. Stop.
No, what's personal for me is the disrespect you show parents and families in this community.
That's your opinion. Thank you. We're calling this to order.
A widely shared community.
We are calling the question.
Two elections first elected.
Calling the question. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss? No. Carlos Harp?
No.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
We are voting on continue to stream, but not to record, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The two. Next up, GRC report.
It didn't pass, correct?
It did not.
She's not here.
Where's Rick?
We have a meeting coming up.
HREC?
Uh, we have a meeting coming up, actually.
Finance Committee. Enrollment Committee.
I shared the updates earlier. We just started our Facebook ad with a 20-mile radius of Madison. And hopefully, we will get some results and we'll let you know. And then the Channel 7 ad is up and running and they have a report that they will share with us at the next meeting.
All right. Board comments. Trustee Thompson?
I hope everybody has had a nice summer. Thank you for coming out tonight, everybody who's here. That's it.
Trustee Chambliss?
Uh, football and volleyball are gearing up. I am glad to say football program is expanding larger. I don't know how many people they're going to have, but it is huge. I'm sorry, there's a bug flying around. And they haven't even gotten the school year started. Volleyball will have JV and varsity for the first time in seven or eight years. Nearly 30 girls. And we haven't even had Eagle Day yet. Car wash last weekend raised $283 towards volleyball's pink-out jerseys. And there will be a car wash this Saturday, August 9th, 10 to 5 here at the high school. We're raising money for school supplies for the four buildings to help students who don't have their supplies or to avoid teachers having to purchase those supplies. Other than that, have a good night.
Trustee Harp?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. This is why we're here, right? We're all doing our civic duties to support the school. So thank you, everyone who came. Thank you, everyone who's watching. If I could, I would like to say if we feel like we're missing or not capturing all the information in the minutes, maybe, again, that's an opportunity. Maybe we should adjust that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I hope they're enjoying their summer and that's it.
A couple of things. First of all, who's the volleyball coach?
We have not handed out any contracts yet, but Rebecca, Coach Chambliss and Ashlyn have been working with the students.
Trustee Chambliss cannot be a coach. We have talked about this. We've gotten legal opinions. How many times you cannot coach?
I can't be the head coach. Ashlyn's the head coach. I'm the co-coach.
Talk again about this.
Just like...
With the attorney coming, she cannot be the head coach.
Joe said it was fine.
Joe said you cannot be the head coach.
I promise you, Joe said it was fine.
Joe said you cannot be the head coach. There is too much responsibility for the district. You cannot be the head coach. Rebecca, we will spend another $250. Joe will come to the next meeting on the 18th.
I'll update y'all soon.
And we will do this yet again. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, thanks for interrupting me yet again. The minutes of this meeting, I do concur with trustee Chambliss. I was looking for something in particular and none of our check registers are there because I was trying to look something up. And the minutes need to be more thorough. I agree with her wholeheartedly. I was trying to find something and our minutes of our board meetings are skeletal at best.
So should we...
We need to...
Trace our secretary to take minutes as the meeting is going on? Because that's really who's supposed to be taking the meeting.
Well, somebody needs to take better minutes. I know it used to be trustee, or the... Ms. Kennedy. But we need to, we need to come up with a solution because I do agree that there is no discussion. There is no, it is skeletal at best. I'm sure that we are meeting the state requirement, but even the check registers should be included, the personnel report, all of that. When you're right, you're right. When I disagree with you, I'm going to tell you that, too. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Support? Trustee Thompson? Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Jella will be here in two weeks.
I think we should have a phone call with them tomorrow.
No, it's not necessary. We'll have this discussion. We have already discussed this three times on the phone. We will have them here in person so everybody can hear the same thing.
Gladly.